Becky, are you ready? Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I will call the Monday, March 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Lincoln County Commissioners to Order. A couple of announcements. We will be following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the door. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meetings Act. We reserve the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the Board. Excuse me. And the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of parties involved. I have requested that our Emergency Management Deputy Joanna stop by this morning and give us an update on the fires that we had at the end of last week and over the weekend. So when she pops in, we will, as soon as we can, have her give her report so she can get back to her office. With that, our first agenda item is to open with prayer. Commissioner Brunz, if you would lead us, please.
Join me if you're so inclined, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with thanksgiving and humbleness in our hearts, Lord. We ask that you just bless these discussions today. Anoint the conversation. Allow for good discourse and thought to be shared and the decisions that are made today for Lincoln County, that they be pleasing in your eye, Lord. Lord, we lift up our first responders, those men and women that work hard to protect our community from our law enforcement and in particular, our fire personnel that have fought so many challenges this past week. Lord, we pray for just a touch of precipitation, Lord, to quell the dryness and lift them all up into your arms for protection. Lord, we also ask that you be with our military personnel that work hard to preserve our rights and our freedoms and our way of life. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our next item is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting that was held last week on February 24th, 2025.
It'd be my motion to approve those minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on February 24th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you've all had a chance to review them, are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Moving on, we will consider the following claims and treasures receipts.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion we approve the Claims and Treasures Receipts as presented and as always, we find something similar, we have the right to pull up and review.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Becky, the front page on this is something that's normally not included. Is that on the revenue listing? Is that just a quarterly report?
No, that's the trial balance that shows in the RAD as of 2/26.
But we didn't have our revenue, did we, this time?
Yeah.
It's behind it.
It's behind it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Problem is, it's only a hundred.
I didn't even turn it over to see.
It's only 108,000 versus 500,000 now.
No, sorry, that's, she runs out for Cheryl and I, so it's, keep track of where we're at.
Very good. Thank you for including that. I liked seeing that information. Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler. Our next item is authorizing the chair to sign the renewal with the National Insurance Services for Life and AD&amp;D Policies effective July 1st, 2025. Is there somebody here to speak to that?
I guess I can't. This is just our renewal, our National Insurance Services through NACO. As you can see, that we have a no rate increase at this time, so that was good news. I think it's been a couple of years since we've had a rate increase, so.
It has been, yeah.
Very good. I always appreciate the work that NACO does for keeping things affordable for the counties.
Do you read for motion?
I am.
I'd make a motion we authorize the chair to sign the National Insurance Services for Long-Term Disability Policy effective July 1, 2025.
Don't above that.
Pull it above.
Oh, I'm sorry. National Life Insurance Services for Life and D Policy effective July 1. I guess I better read the agenda and not assume I know what it is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Now, we will authorize the chair to sign the renewal with National Insurance Services for Long-Term Disability Policies effective July 1, 2025.
Same thing, as far as rate.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve and authorize your signature on the renewal with the National Insurance Services forms for long-term disability policies effective July 1, 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Brunz.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Our next item is adoption of resolution number 2025-05, authorizing the chair to sign a closing document for Greenbrier.
I think we have one before that.
What are you pulling, what are you doing?
We need one above that.
Oh, we do. Thank you. I skipped it.
What kind of jumping ahead here, huh?
We are.
Can't wait to get to the six, one and six-year-old point, can we?
All right, we will, we will back up an agenda item. We will now authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Scott McFeeters.
Hi, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. This is a permit for a power crossing bore underneath Gilman Gravel Road for Stockwell. And we did receive a check, completed permit, and no objection from Roads Department.
Tell me exactly where Gilman Road is, would ya?
Uh, clear out in the east part of the county, and it heads down north-south from, well, not quite Banner, but all the way down that direction.
So it's further than Cottonwood, you understand?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, I think that might be our last major north-south in the county.
You're getting pretty close to Farham when you get there.
Yep.
Give you my motion to authorize the chairman's signature approving the right-of-way permits submitted by Scott McFeeters as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Just one place on here, Becky. Okay, now, we will review the resolution of number 2025-05, authorizing the chair to sign a closing document for Greenbrier.
Fine, I'll speak to this one. I was contacted by Title Services across the street. The one piece of the puzzle that we have to bring is a resolution authorizing the chair to sign all the closing documents over there. They need that for their title commitment. Once they have that, it's all over but the sign, and I do believe, so you'll officially be owners.
No more wait period or anything, just?
And this is the final action that was needed in order to transfer ownership from the chamber to the county.
So you will be signing for the county, yes.
And that'll remove it from the tax rolls, then?
Effective the date we take ownership, yes.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve and authorize your signature on resolution number 2025-05 regarding the closing document for Greenbrier, former Greenbrier facility.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
You will all sign this one, but also the motion.
Do we need to modify that motion?
Authorize all signatures, would be my edit.
Very good.
And I would approve that.
So we have a motion and a second amended. Roll call, please. Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Thank you, Tyler, for helping us finalize that.
Well, we don't like that, so.
Moving on, we have a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for a special designated liquor permit for Aiden Enterprises LLC for a reception to be held at the Homestead Punctum Patch on June 7th, 2025.
Tim was not going to come in today because he does have a catering license. We've done quite a few events for different people out at that Punctum Patch, so the state changed all that last May, June, whenever that was, because everything's done online now. So once we get local approval, we give it to him, he submits it through the portal to the state, and then basically, they just verify with us that he's paid his fee, and they send it directly to him now.
There is not a note from the.
Now show them that note.
But there is not a note from the sheriff. Becky, do you know if Sheriff Kramer has seen the?
I don't know. I don't know. He owns a lot more bars, so I, he's a.
And he has done several of these events previously that we have approved.
He does a lot of events, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, my recommendation that we approve and send on a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for a special designated liquor permit for Aiden Enterprises LLC for a reception to be held at the Homestead Punctum Patch on June 7, 2025. I would second that motion through the chair's signature.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I will note that he has written a lot of things that address my concerns as far as wristbands and checking ID's and that he's going to have security at the entrances and exits and throughout the event, so.
I will also say that I'm very familiar with the facility itself and have attended many events over there, and it has a good setup for controlling. It's in a fairly remote, isolated area, so. And you're right, Commissioner Brunz, his detail on the second page really lays out the plan that they have in place, so. With that said, roll call. Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler. It is 9:16. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, excuse me, and reconvene as the Lincoln County.
For recesses, board of commissioners.
Oh, sorry. I'm early off today, aren't I? Not used to having that much on the consent agenda. We will recess as the Lincoln County. Oh, Joanna is here. With that, we won't recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to have Joanna come up and give her review before we move on.
Just want to put me in the hot spot right now.
Good morning, Joanna. I know you have a lot going on, so if you would just announce yourself and sign in.
Is this on?
Yes.
It is, okay. Joanna Lemoine, Deputy Director for Region 51 Emergency Management.
Morning, Joanna.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, I have a lot going on, including prepping for a winter storm tomorrow, so. Okay, so fires. Yes, we had quite a few of them last week. Not just us, but all over the place. They had my eight in Custer County on Monday that we ended up having mutual aid go up for. They kind of combined, and they had mutual aid for a number of days after that as well. We also did have a small fire near Hershey on Monday, but they got that one out pretty quickly. Tuesday, we had the one southeast of town. That one was a burn pile that rekindled, and it burned, I believe, about 150 acres. It was in the canyons. They did request air support, but the unfortunate thing is, all of the pilots for the airplanes were at the spray pilot convention in Carney. And with the timing of the fire, unfortunately, there would not have been enough time for them to make it here and do any dumps before sunset. They're not allowed to fly after sunset, so. So we did get them fed, then, let me see, that started just after 4:00, and they had it out. Oh, I think they were done around 8:30, 9:00 o'clock, if I am remembering correctly. There's obviously so many fires, it's hard to keep them straight right now. Wednesday, I don't think we had any, unless it was mutual aid up to Custer. I think we had some mutual aid up to Custer. Thursday, we had the one south of Maxwell that burned approximately 600 acres. That one was started by people cutting down trees with chainsaws and getting it sparked. Unfortunately, that was also in canyons. We were able to get a plane that time, and four and a partial load is what he dropped for us. Casey with a broken bow did that. He's really good. And they had that out. We also, well, we did get them fed too, just as they were mopping up and getting ready to send people home. But they were done around 8:00, I think, again, sending people home. So that was between 600 and 700 acres. We are working on doing the 209 for that one to send to Rocky Mountain. I just need to finish getting a couple pieces of information from the Brady Fire Chief to finish that off and get him to sign it, and then we can get that over to them. They did actually have that flare up again Friday afternoon, so I'll have to double-check that and see if there's anything to add to the 209 for that. The good thing is, because they already had the black line, they didn't really need much. They were only out there for about four hour, well, yeah, about four hours. There was also a very small grass fire south of the tracks along Gerald Ginnaman. Hershey and South of Linn were paged, and the next thing I know, like nine minutes later, they had gotten it out with a fire extinguisher, so I'm like, okay, I can handle that one. And there was actually a fire on Saturday out Ridgecrest Circle in Hershey. Someone was burning boxes, cardboard boxes, and set the pasture on fire. Thankfully, that was all flatland. They didn't request anything. I checked back about two and a half hours later, and they were, like, mopped up and gone, and I'm like, okay, no news is good news then, so.
Did we send any mutual aid up to the Mullen area?
Um, I think we did. I think Hershey at least went. I know North Platte was asked, but I heard that they had been called off and had not gone, so I'm not 100% on that one. But I do believe Hershey went up to Mullen on that one.
Joanna, it was a very lively week, and I just want to say, we know that Brandon is off, and you were the one in charge, and you did a great job with keeping me updated and providing me with real-time information, so it was a lot on your plate, and you handled it very well, so I appreciate everything that you did. And you're right, we have a winter storm moving in, and I know you need to get back to what you do and taking care of not just Lincoln County, but a wide surrounding area, so thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we will recess as the Lincoln. Okay, now we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene at the, as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:23, also following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the door. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the meeting on February 24, 2025.
Madam Chair, it would be my motion to approve those minutes for the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held February 24, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Next, we have our certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county treasurer. Looks like we just have one. Good morning. If you'd like to announce yourself and sign in.
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor, not the treasurer.
Sorry.
I think you're right in treasurer, so that's fine.
Did I say treasurer?
You did. That's okay.
Thank you.
This is going to be a 2024 taxless correction on a personal property schedule. It's under Peak Interest LLC, but that would be the old Pizza Hut building that was south of town that was tore down where the new Chick-fil-A has went in. They actually signed and turned in a 2024 schedule, but I think when they got a tax bill, then somebody realized that they actually sold the business in 2023, so they should have not turned in a personal property schedule. But it was signed and dated and turned in to us, so we did. A tax statement was issued, but we will correct it then since they sold the business.
Very good. This is for, as Julie said, Peak Interest LLC in the amount of $421.44.
My motion to approve the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
That is everything that we had on the Board of Equalization agenda. We will adjourn as the Board of Equalization at 9:26 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our 9:20 item is discuss and consider authorizing Nebraska International Port of the Plains Committee to engage the North Platte Airport Authority in discussions related to expansion of the Nebraska International Port of the Plains District. Commissioner Brunz, I believe you asked for this to be put on.
I did. Conversation was first brought up at the most recent Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board of Directors meeting. Joe and I had a very brief conversation regarding, we probably need to get the conversation started. We're both in agreement with that. My ask for this to be on the agenda is merely for this board to give approval for Commissioner Hughley and myself to start engaging the North Platte Airport Authority on what that process may look like. Currently, we have a district that is out by Hershey that we have appointed a board of directors to oversee and help get the port authority up and going. But there was recent legislative changes. Lincoln County was invited into that conversation, a lot of work with the Chamber Development Corporation, members of the Board of Directors for the Port Authority. And one of the bargaining chips that we had, that we asked for, that was approved in that, those negotiations for changes to the Municipal Inland Port Authority Act was we wanted to see a non-contiguous area for port districts be extended from a quarter mile to 15 miles. That way, we can incorporate the airport and the assets that we have there into the overall mix for economic development and transportation and really having access to trade markets here and internationally. So, legislature passed that. It's been codified into state statute. I feel that we're at that juncture where the county should probably start having the conversation because we have the authority at this board to expand or constrict the district boundaries. But it's going to take a lot of people at the table having those conversations. We have a political subdivision with the Airport Authority. We have the Board of Directors for the Inland Port Authority. And then members of this board that need to be in the conversation make sure that all people are on the same page and knowing what it's going to look like. It's going to be a complex process, a lot of things that need to get ironed out. But that's why I wanted this on the agenda. That way, we could have any discussion that may need to be had and get approval for that conversation to start. So, nothing definitive happening right now. We don't know what that area would look like, potentially if we do expand the port district, but time to get the ball rolling as far as talking.
Very good. I had a couple of questions, and you answered every one of them in your explanation there, so I appreciate it. Just to verify, the original was just a quarter mile right around the Greenbrier facility?
Correct.
And this just pushes it out far enough that we can also include the airport?
Correct.
Makes sense to me. Commissioner Hughley?
The only thing that I was going to mention is contiguous jump. And I think it has to be contiguous, if I'm not mistaken, but I might be wrong.
Contiguous is the main district. The changes in the legislation, current or previous legislation allowed for non-contiguous area of a certain percentage to be so far away from the district. The size of that non-contiguous area remained the same. The distance from the contiguous area was expanded to 15 miles. So, we can have a small portion of the district potentially out at the airport for air cargo operations, so.
I see some people sitting in our audience today that I know have an interest in both the airport and the inland port. Is there any input that anybody would like to have? Or you're here to support the? If you'd like to speak, please come up and sit at the table and sign in and announce yourselves.
Dan Phelps with the North Platte Airport Authority.
Justin Gosnell, Airport Manager.
Good morning, Mr. Phelps, Mr. Gosnell.
Yeah, I'll speak on behalf of the Airport Authority Board. We are very much in favor and excited about the possibilities here. In fact, one thing Justin and I wanted to update you on, at our last board meeting, we entered into an authorization with HDR Engineering to start the process of what we need to do out on our end. Right now, we have an area that is designated for future development of businesses, air cargo, anything that needs an airport basically to operate. And, but a portion of that is in the floodplain. So, our very first step is to see what we need to do to get the rest of that out of the floodplain. And we started that study. That's been authorized with the HD Mandate. They're going to start working on that right away. So, that's really our first step. And to Chris, or Christopher Brunz's point, we're excited about the possibilities. So, we're on board and look forward to starting those discussions. And Chris is right, it's going to be a very complex process with a lot of different folks.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Good information. Thank you.
So, Dan will have our people get a hold of your people, right?
Absolutely.
Mr. Steele, would you like to come up?
Aye.
Sure.
Yeah, Mike Steele. I'm the treasurer for the Port Authority, the Nebraska International Port of the Plains. And at our meetings, as Chris had mentioned, we just had some conversations based on the potential. And as we continue to move forward, I think it was a different board member that brought it up and said it would be nice to have the possibility in place so when we get to the point in our process that we can then extend beyond and start looking at things out there, that it's already in place and ready to go. So, it's not another hurdle that we have to jump to as we move forward, so.
Very good. Sounds like a joint collaboration that'll be good for everything happening out at the Nebraska International Port of the Plains. So, moving on, do we need a motion?
I would, just as a formal record.
Okay. All right. We are to that point.
It would be my motion to authorize the Nebraska Port of the Plains Committee to engage the North Platte Airport Authority in discussion related to the expansion of the Nebraska International Port of the Plains District. Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Just to point out that the early concept of this Port of the Plains, the airport, was a key integral part of that equation and weighed heavily on the ability to get that here. So, it's always been on the radar as part of this comprehensive effort.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
As Commissioner Hughley said, we'll have our people call your people.
You guys have a lot going on out at the airport right now. Every time I drive by out there, I'm impressed at how much progress has been made, so. Good job. Moving on to our next item is to receive bids for SUVs for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. I believe we have at least Captain Newton, Sheriff Kramer.
Good morning.
Aye.
Good morning.
How are you?
If you'd like to announce yourselves after signing in.
Jerome Kramer, Sheriff.
Dan Newton, Captain.
Frame call.
Good morning.
Are there copies?
Yes, there are.
So, the first bid I am opening is from Jenson's Chrysler here in North Platte out on Halligan Drive. And this is for the Durango Police Pursuit bid. Okay, it says in code you will find bids for four new 2025 Dodge Durango Police Pursuit vehicles minus four. Minus four. I'm not sure what that says.
Trucks for trade.
Trucks for trade. Says the Durangos retail for $49,080. Lincoln County gets a $6,500 discount per Durango. That makes them $42,580. The four together retail for $196,320. County cost for the four would be $170,320 for a savings of $26,000. And do you guys have this information?
No.
No.
Is that after trade? We just have the summary sheet.
The $170,320 is after the trades, I believe. This one was for the V8.
There's a second.
Hemi.
Here's a second chance. Does this designate something other than?
No, just Dodge Durango. The V8.
This is a.
Same thing, only V6.
V6, okay. Where's your V6 bid?
I'm going to give this. So, here's for the V8, if you'd like to pass those over. And the next packet is also from Jenson Chrysler for the Dodge Durango Police Pursuit V6. On this one, I'm just going to give the totals. $183,360 total with a $26,000 discount for a cost of $157,360. Total trade-in value, $67,000 for total due, $90,360. There's also all of the details in there.
Bill Summers.
Yep.
There's the three.
Documents that go with it.
Okay.
Documents to go with it.
Very good. Our third packet is from Bill Summers Ford for the 2024 Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles. Per vehicle, is that right? Per vehicle, looks like $54,085.
Here's your net, $49,999.
Very good. So, yeah, the net, so that was with an in-house incentive of $2,680.60 and a rebate of $1,405 per vehicle for a total of $49,999.40 per vehicle. For the four, an aggregate total of $199,997.60. Trade-in values, $70,500 for a final price of $129,479.60.
$497.
Oh, would I say $467? $497.
$497.
60. Here's the spec sheet on that.
This is a 3.0-liter EcoBoost V6 engine, 10-speed auto transmission. I can't remember if I asked last time or not. Do we know if the radio systems will transfer into these vehicles easily?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The radios will, but there is some other stuff that won't, like the computer mount and the cage.
Because of size.
It's just anytime you go from the pickup to SUV, everything, the windshield lights might fit, but you've got to get different brackets. The cages definitely will not cross over. The grow guards won't.
Would you guys like to take some time to review? Would you like to come back another day?
Well, considering the different, this is a lot more complicated than we've done in the past with different engine sizes and different configurations and different rebates. It's a real complicated way to get to the end, but that's what we have to deal with, so. I don't know that we can make an intelligent answer in the next 15 minutes.
I hear a suggestion for us to table this and bring it back again.
I think that's the wise thing to do. There's too much material here.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, Becky, do you have a time and date available, or you wanted to see?
Sure.
I need one copy of each of those bids, please. About 9:30 next week.
It's a lot, keep track of it, isn't it?
Last one, we got.
I was thinking of the package before you did that, because I could see what was gonna happen.
Very good, gentlemen, we will see you again next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you put together just an easy spreadsheet of vendor engine price for when you come back, and maybe some pros and cons?
Very good. Leave it to the Sheriff's Office to get us right back on schedule, thank you. It is 9:46, our 9:45 item is update on the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan by Lincoln County Planning Administrator Judy Clark.
Good morning, Judy.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. So, where we're at with this comp plan right now is, the consultant says he's about 90% done, looking at the document that I received, and I believe I emailed it out to the two on the planning committee, which is Commissioner Woller and Commissioner Brunz. It looks to me like we're, in my opinion, about 80% done. There's still some missing items in there that need to be done. My staff member, Michelle, and I have looked through that and made some suggestions on changes, nothing huge, mostly some typos, some things that we felt were maybe not worded quite correctly. I do have a pretty good draft of the future land use map, I believe I also sent that out. We had a few changes, there were a couple of things that we needed to look at, is just some industrial areas due to Port of the Plains. The Graybowl project, I didn't think should be, continue to remain as an ag project, it should probably have a different land use facilitated with that, so we got that out. Additionally, I did get some really, really draft form of wind and solar regulations, which I also sent a copy of that out to the two commissioners that sit on the planning board, and I also sent that to my Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary of the Planning Commission to take a look at those and see if that's the way that we're thinking that we want to go with these regulations, or if we want to go totally different. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. I sent an email to the consultant to see if we could pin down some dates as to when it's gonna be complete, complete, and at that point, he then wants to sit down with a couple of commissioners and a couple of planning commissioners and just kind of go over it before we completely put it out for public meetings and public hearings. I haven't gotten an email response back yet, but I should see him at a conference this week, so I will pin him down with some dates as to when we're gonna get this done, so that's where we're at.
We'll see him, too.
Yes.
As long as we make it because of the weather, so hopefully...
I'm sure he always looks forward to seeing us, because I already have a page and a half of notes. I have, to be honest with you, Judy, it was a lot.
It is a lot.
Between the three separate emails that we had gotten, I think of all of that, the easiest for me to get through was the land use map, and you answered some questions there for us. I really appreciate how I feel like you do a great job in looking out for the best interest of all Lincoln County residents, and you had made some good updates and suggestions, and I feel like I agreed with almost everything that you had on that land use map.
For the sake of, I mean, I know the answer, but people watching, people in the room, they may not. What does the process look like once we get the quote-unquote "final draft" from the consultant? Can you explain that?
So, once we get what we would call, consider our final draft, then I believe that we're gonna have at least two, if not more, public meetings before we go through the actual adoption process. So, I know Commissioner Woller likes the town hall style meetings, I know the consultant likes the...
Open house.
Open house type meetings, so...
Could I second that motion, excuse me for interrupting?
You like the town hall also?
Yeah, because...
I do, too.
I do, too.
For a very specific reason, which we all know.
Yes.
I do, too.
I do, yes.
So, we're gonna negotiate, we're gonna negotiate how those go, but we'll make sure that it gets advertised really well, so that everybody in the entirety of Lincoln County has an opportunity to come and at least look at what we're thinking and have a chance to voice opinions. And then, once those get taken care of, then it will actually go to a public hearing for adoption, and there will be two of those, one at the Planning Commission level to make a recommendation for adoption of the comp plan, and then, of course, one at the Commissioners' level. So, there will be at least three, if not four, opportunities for people to come and give opinions and tell you what they think, so...
So, if, here we are, you know, we're already into March.
Yep.
A big component of the comp plan is dealing with energy, and we do have a moratorium in place that expires mid to late April. My concern is we're not gonna have enough time, because we don't even have the final yet. I would concur with you, we're about 80, maybe 85% complete from what we've received as far as deliverables.
Well, Judy, has he not done anything the last three months? Because when you were here last time, he was 80 or 90% complete, if you remember.
Yeah, no, he has done, we've gotten quite a few emails back and forth since then, so I am hoping that he is more complete than, yes. But we have gotten some information between last time and this time, then, yes.
But my point is, is we have a moratorium that expires April 22nd, I believe is the date.
Yes.
I don't know that we have enough time to give the appropriate amount of notice to get the public engagement for the town halls that I would like to see happen, as well as scheduling an appropriate notice for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yep.
Their public hearing, then to have come before us, appropriate notice for our public hearing prior to that thing expiring.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty tight. I mean, it could probably be done, if we had the final product today, I could tell you we could get it done.
Yeah, but that's the crux of the issue.
Right, we don't have the final product.
And I, my position on that all along has been, I do not want to rush this.
Agreed.
This is, this is a plan that will be in place for 10 to 20 years, depending, not that it can't be amended along the way, but this is a huge investment for Lincoln County, all of Lincoln County, and I would rather take our time and slow it down a little bit. We're getting close, closer than we've been in the last three years, and so I think I hear what you're saying, that you may be interested in exploring and pushing that moratorium out a little farther, is that correct?
I would be.
Let's see, here's my suggestion, let's, he will be there, we will corner him.
Yes.
And we will pin down some dates, and then, at that point, we will have a good idea of how long we should extend it out, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Monday, we can put it on the agenda, or the following Monday, and see where we need to be.
I think the extension is a good idea, just as the Chairwoman says, to get it right. But, you know, let me make note, I mean, we're doing it in a good-hearted fashion, but there's a reason this guy's this far back, he's good, he's got a lot of clients, he does it right, and he doesn't allow himself to be rushed, he goes through all the proper steps, so give him credit, that's why he's in demand.
Yep.
You know, let's be honest, if he was an attorney and you could go see him tomorrow, he might not be the attorney for the expertise you need. Well, let's be candid, that's kind of the way this works. So, he's, this firm is very thorough, very capable, and very storied in plans they put together, so I think that's the other factor that you need to keep in mind, is, I appreciate the twist in his arm, but he's got other things going on, and you all know that, so in fairness to him, that needs to be said.
That's a fair point.
Yep.
Fair point, and might also remind him that one of the deliverables he gave was, he would be here in October to tell us that, but he didn't tell us what October was gonna be.
Yeah. This is true. But, yeah, no, we will get him pinned down and figure out exactly where we're at, and see where we can go from there.
In the meantime, Judy, with your approval, if you think it's a good idea, I'm gonna go ahead and put my chicken scratches into an email and share it with Commissioner Brunz and you, and Marvin Planning.
Perfect.
And I think these are mostly just little things that I noticed that either, mostly additions that I felt needed to be added.
Okay, yeah, that's no problem whatsoever.
If we can, if we can get some...
It's what you guys are there for.
Yep, if we can get some of that figured out before we get to a public hearing, I think that would speed up any adjustments, so...
Sounds good.
Does anybody have any other questions, or...
We'll see you later this week.
Very good.
Thank you, Judy.
Yep, thank you.
All right, our 9:55 item is, one of the things that we look forward to the most here is recognizing Lincoln County employees. So, we will now do our employee appreciation presentation to a Lincoln County Sheriff's Office employee, Willie Purvis.
He's not here, anyway.
I saw him earlier in the item. Sheriff Kramer, I'm gonna ask that you do the presentation, since he works directly for you.
Smile.
He is smiling.
That's a big smile.
Good morning, Mr. Purvis. Welcome.
I'd like to introduce Willie Purvis to the board, he's a sergeant for me at the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. Willie's in charge of our safekeepers for the counties, the federal, when they had the state, he was, so, Willie's the one that has his hand in all of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that come back to Lincoln County for housing inmates. He's a very important part of our organization, so we'd really like to have this opportunity to recognize him and honor him today for his 20 years of service. And also, his beautiful wives in the crowd to support him, and we appreciate that, so , Willie, thank you.
Thank you, Willie.
Commissioners, would you like a photo opportunity with...
Darn right, I wanna shake hands.
The sheriff and Mr. Purvis.
You got his best side, or you're okay.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Thank you.
Is there enough room in here, or should we go out in the hallway?
Your head right there, just squeeze in, Jerry.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Maybe you guys would like a picture together?
Oh, no, that's okay, we have plenty.
that's how I get off. It is...
Technology, okay.
Yes. It is 10:00 a.m. Our next agenda item is our public hearing on the proposed Lincoln County One and Six Year Road Improvement Plan.
Morning again, everybody, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent, and Brian Gloss, Department of General, Deputy Highway Superintendent.
So, Mr. Volkmer did indulge my request and laid out an outline for me, this is my first public hearing, thus a little bit of my nerves today, especially we have a bigger audience than I'm used to. So, feel free to jump in and keep me on track, but it's my understanding we open the hearing first and declare why we are here, so the hearing is open. We are here to review the One and Six Year Lincoln County Road Improvement Plan, and I will begin with our Lincoln County Road Superintendent Jason Schultz and his deputy, Brian Gloss, explaining to us why we are here and to let me receive any materials that you may have into our record at this time.
So, I believe we handed out the packets already that have the One and Six Year Plans, the previous projects, and some maps. We have a PowerPoint presentation we'll be going through as we talk through this, and then also, we have a board in the back there. The current one is the One Year Plan that's up there right now, just so we can reference and highlight anything if there's any questions on locations or things like that, and we also do have a Six Year Plan board that we'll put up when we get to that point as well.
Very good, thank you.
And I guess we'll just jump right into previous year projects. This should be the first outline you guys come to, I'll have it up on the screen as well. So, previous year's projects that include completed, removed, or carried over, we didn't have any projects that we removed from our One and Six Year. So, I guess to start at the top with the completed, the, one of the bigger ones was the Sudland-North River Bridge, so that one was completed last year and opened, and serving the community quite well, I must add. Next one is the North Maxwell Road, the Mill and Overlay Project that we did out there last year. We have a North Maxwell Road Project 2302, there was some culverts that we needed to do ahead of the asphalt extension out there, the other little project that we did in cooperation with Graybowl, with Dormy. that we did in cooperation with, uh, with Graebel, with Dormy. Um, then we had a couple of subdivisions. We had the Indian Hills Subdivision that we did an overlay out in that entire subdivision. Um, we have the Hillcrest Subdivision, uh, that we did an overlay on a portion of that subdivision, um, the only, really the only areas that we felt needed the overlay at the time. Um, we have the North River Road Project, um, which we did complete 11 and a half miles of that project, and, uh, it was originally supposed to be 14 and a half, but that additional three, we rolled into a previous project we'd already stated that we'll get to in the One Year. Uh, then we have some, kind of some smaller, um, earthwork projects, um, road rebuilding projects, um, so Hanson Hill Road, we have a couple of good photos of that one, that was a pretty in-depth project for, uh, for the Maxwell area. Heritage Valley Drives, uh, south of town here, we had South Game Trail Road, Slant Road, we did some culverts out there. Birdwood Road, we had some rebuild out there. Uh, Waton Road, we did a couple miles of a rebuild up there. Uh, South Somerset Road, so this is, that's the first one of the carryovers. So South Somerset Road was the 10-mile project, uh, that we had that carried over, we worked on last year. Um, we're almost done with that, that's a, pretty much a rebuild of the gravel road. Um, we still have one mile, the weather in winter kind of closed us out for finishing that up last year, so that'll be first on our list to complete this year. We just have one mile remaining out there to finish that portion of the gravel road. Uh, then we have Power Road that's gonna be carrying over to be completed this year on the One Year, and then we also have the North Buffalo Road, uh, rebuild out there that was on our One Year last year that, uh, we did not, uh, get to that one to get it completed either, so. That's our three carryovers, and then we do have a few slides of some of the completed, um, so like the North Sudland Bridge, I don't know if everybody's been out to see that one or not, but, uh, that project turned out wonderful. Um, if anyone's drove across that, I'm sure they, they agree. A few more pictures of construction of the North Sudland Bridge. Um, here we have the North Maxwell Road Paving Project, um, so that one, you know, was the Mill and Overlay, but then this section I, we have a picture of here was, uh, it was a very narrow section right there coming out of Maxwell, um, that we did a lot of additional shouldering to widen out that, improve the safety of that, um, that area right there, so that one turned out really well. Um, then a picture of the Slant Road culverts there, culverts with the headwalls. A few photos of the Indian Hills Subdivision, uh, that one was in pretty dire need, so got that one completed, that one turned out really, really well. Uh, Hillcrest Subdivision, um, that one went well as also. North River Road, um, so we did do the, the widening Mill and Overlay up there, the first section, and I think, uh, that one was, uh, definitely turned out wonderful. We did a lot of dirt work on that one as well to widen out the shoulders, we had a lot of areas kind of the same, uh, sharp shoulder drop-offs or not very wide shoulders. Um, there's another, the Slant Road culverts again, but then the Heritage Drive and Valley Drive that we did the, the rebuild on out there to elevate those a little bit and eliminate, uh, water holes, we had a lot of low areas in that roadway with all the drives and, um, residences along there. It was very difficult to, uh, try to get any drainage there, so we went in and elevated the whole portion of the road, and that's held up tremendously since we've done that, Um, there's a few pictures of the Hanson Hill Road Project, so we had a big, major washout there that was eating into the roadway, uh, so they did a pretty major fill through there, um, worked with the landowners to, uh, you know, realign that fence and, um, that one turned out very well and hopefully will eliminate our, our problems there in the future. Any questions on any of the completed projects or anything?
Hanson Hill's a lot of, it's a lot of grade, that's a dangerous stretch of road.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
You can get carried away with the stock trailer.
Yep. Yeah, this improved it quite a bit, it took some of that tight corner out of there and it had that start, that steep bank there off the tight corner, so, yeah, you guys did a really good job on that one. Well, we'll go into our One Year Plan then. So in our One Year Plan, we do have, um, location summaries, so maybe we'll just, um, go ahead and start going through those as we go down through the projects. So the first one is the carryover, the South Somerset Road, so there on the picture, we show the last mile that needs to be completed to all the way down to Lone Star.
Jason, if I could interrupt you for just a second.
Sure.
What is your estimated cost on that final one mile?
Uh, the final one mile should be around 30,000, 25 to 30,000. Thank you. Yeah, I did not adjust the cost to show what was this year, that's just for the total project of the whole 10 miles, so. Uh, next one that was the carryover is the Power Road, so that shows the location just south of Sudland Reservoir there, um, that mile through there. Uh, the North Buffalo Road, and that one's, um, I guess I should have the summary out and we can read through the summaries as well if anybody has any questions.
I know that one always gets your attention.
It does.
You can always tell which area that we live in based on our response to what's on your list.
So that one is still on the One Year, um, we're planning to complete that one. That location's a little difficult to work in depending on the water level and the time of the year, so that's usually not a good one to be in, in the spring. Um, so we're planning to, uh, go finish Somerset, and then, uh, further down in the list, we have another, uh, major rebuild project that we're gonna probably go to for, uh, some of the summer and then come back after the, hopefully the water levels go down and we're able to complete that one, uh, probably late summer. Uh, next one on the list is Box Elder, so this is a bridge replacement, um, replacing a wooden bridge with culverts. So that shows the location there, down Box Elder off of State Farm. Uh, next project is Fairway Estates, so this is a overlay of the subdivision, 1.25 miles, um, out on the south side of Lake Maloney. Uh, so that one is, I guess made our One Year List for one of the subdivisions. And the next three are actually our subdivisions that we have kind of in our asphalt program right now. Uh, the next one here is 2404, that is Prairie View Acres West, so that's the, um, west side of that subdivision, that's a 0.9 miles of asphalt overlay. Um, it's the last portion of that subdivision that hasn't been recently overlaid, so, um, we'd like to get it caught up and up to the standards of the rest of the area there. And then the third subdivision that we had in our program right here is the, uh, 2405 is Calvary Hills, um, and that's 1.2 miles of overlay for that subdivision there. Um, and then on to our, our major Mill and Overlays for Asphalt, the first one is the North River Road Project, so like I said, last year, we had, um, only had three miles on this project, 2406, uh, but since we stopped a little bit short on the previous year, we added that in here, so now we have a total of six miles to complete that widening Mill and Overlay, um, and extend that project from where we stopped at Game Trail there. Uh, the next one is 2204, that's North Brady Road, so, um, that one will go from the village limits of Brady, um, all the way up to Wild Horse, and we do have a one-mile section in there, if you guys recall, that we had to do, um, kind of an emergency repair on it, um, so we already did one mile in that section, um, so that'll decrease that one down to a four-and-a-half mile project, but that'll take it all the way up to Wild Horse Road. And then the last one for the Mill and Overlay is Suburban Road, um, so that'll go from Eschelman, just up north of town here, it'll go from Eschelman and then across Highway 83 and then down to the end of the asphalt, just past, uh, Washboard. Next project on the One Year is Fletcher Road, so it's a, uh, drainage stabilization, new gravel, so a road rebuild, uh, clear down in the southeast corner of the county. Um, we have Merriam Road, 2410, uh, two miles from State Farm, south to east Plattview. Next one is Fairview, um, which is out on the east county line, just north of I-80, um, so we have a, two miles there, a Fairview and a little piece of Svedal there. Uh, next project, 2511, is West Slough Road, so this project, um, is a cooperation with MPPD, they're actually replacing a, uh, a drainage structure underneath that road there, it has a pretty tight hairpin curve to it right now, um, they're doing a project, they approached us, um, and they're planning on building that this summer, and it will actually increase the length of their structure and straighten that road out a little bit, and they can make it a lot better and safer, and then, uh, the only thing they're asking us to do, uh, for our part, is just to simply regrade and add some gravel when they're, when they're complete, so. Wonderful project for us to address a, uh, situation that we probably wouldn't have had on our One Year originally, so, uh, thanks to them for, for their efforts as well. Uh, next one is 2412, so this is that other major road rebuild project that we'll be going to down on Nelson Road, um, after we complete the Somerset Road, uh, one mile there, so that crew and equipment will be going down there to work on this four-mile stretch of Nelson Road. Uh, next one is South and East Banner Road, so this project is a seal coat and resurfacing of 7.6 miles of South and East Banner Roads, uh, beginning at the State Right-Away, south of I-80, and then ending at the Wilson and Bailey Road intersections. Um, so this is the, I guess the first project to kick off our, um, big push for asphalt maintenance. Um, so I think one thing we're trying to look at now is to kind of backtrack a little bit to our previous overlay projects, um, our crews are out there right now actually doing crack seal, um, ahead of this, um, project, so, um, we're looking to try to start investing more in our maintenance and get more life out of our pavements that were, that we currently have or we've recently done, so. So this'll be the first section of that, and then on the Six Year, we do have the remaining seven miles all the way to the county line on Banner Road to, uh, to do a, a seal coat and resurfacing of it as well. Uh, next project is 2518, so that's North Maxwell Road, so this is a road rebuild, uh, from east Keywit all the way up to Needon.
Is that just past where the golf course is?
Yeah, yep, which they had done the portion by the golf course there and around the corner there to east Keywit, so this will be starting there and going all the way up to Needon there.
Okay. Gets you up to the Garfield a little.
Yeah, they've done from Needon North too, I think, two years ago, so that's kind of the missing pieces.
Yeah, Needon North's not bad at all.
Yeah, I think this is the last piece to pretty much complete that all the way up to Garfield.
Good.
Uh, and then the last project on our One Year is 2520, so this is the Birdwood Overpass, so this, uh, project is replacement of expansion joints, uh, deck seal, pavement repairs, rail surfacing repairs, and other associated repairs with that bridge and structure. Um, so this is something we've been looking at for a couple of years now, um, we had gotten some estimates and put some money in previous budgets to do it, but it wasn't enough considering the repairs that, and maintenance that needs to be done. Um, so this one we have on our One Year, um, to go ahead and put that project out to bid and have someone come in and do that.
I've had complaints on that, so clarification on, on the overpass itself, does that, does that belong to the state, is that their obligation or is that us?
No, that's, that's ours.
That's ours?
Yep, that's ours.
Okay, 'cause I, yeah, that's pretty rough.
Yep.
Jason, I have a question on the Birdwood Overpass also, is the work that you are planning on doing, will that be able to remain open while that work is happening, or will it need to be closed for certain parts of it?
No, we'll leave it open, that was the one thing. We've had conversations with, um, with an engineer already on this and to give us some preliminary estimates, and that was one thing, we told him it could not be closed, we need to keep traffic going, so it would probably be a-
One lane tra-
One lane traffic with lights on both sides to, to get people back and forth, but it would stay open.
Very good, thank you.
Jason, on, um, expansion joint stuff, I understand the guardrail and some of the other stuff we're talking about are railing, so what, what are we doing, is it a paint thing, what, what is happening there?
No, there's just, there's some of those, um, there's some spalling and some sealing that needs done, um, where there's water getting in, like some of the guardrail areas, so some of that, uh, just needs to be redone, a couple pieces redone and then reseal.
Down below?
No, most of it's up top, there's one section down below.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any of the One Year?
Uh, I, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
Clarify, Fairway Estates, is that the one we just retook into our?
Yes. Yep, and if you recall, on that one, we were concerned, um, and we, I guess the roads recommendation was for them to do some repairs to some, uh, some of their cracks that they had in the asphalt, um, which they did, they spent, um, quite a bit of their own money before we adopted it to repair those, mill them out, and patch them back in, so that way, um, we knew going in that then all we would have to do is overlay it to, um, get it up to farm, we wouldn't have all that repair work to do.
We went into this eyes wide open that they were gonna have to do this.
Yeah.
And that's the entire circle?
Yep, that's the entire circle, and it's kind of the same thing with the, uh, the other one there.
The West Prairie View.
The Prairie View Acres West, yeah, that was the same situation, we recently adopted, but, um, they did the same thing, they stepped up and made the repairs that we requested at the time, and, um, so those are both just ready to overlay.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I know it's, it's not on the One Year, and I did not see it on the draft of the Six Year that I got, but I'd like some consideration to be given about potentially adding it to a future plan. Uh, North River Road is, really it's the only east-west artery north of the river, uh, in northwest Lincoln County, and that last three and a quarter, three and a half miles of dirt road, it gets beat up pretty bad with truck traffic. Um, I don't know what it would take, I don't know what the price would cost, um, to maybe- I don't know what it would take, I don't know what the price would cost to maybe potentially make that asphalt, but I'd like that to be looked at.
Yeah, we've actually talked about that quite a bit as well. And that probably is something that we need to add to our six-year. That's going to be a pretty major project, because I think there's going to be right-of-way issues through there. I guess number one, just establishing it and seeing if there, we need to get more to straighten the road. But yeah, that's something we've talked about. But I guess we didn't feel it was time quite this year to add it with everything else we had going on, but I think that's definitely one that
Actually, rather than add more asphalt that we can't afford to keep up now, I would encourage you to look at granite base like we did on cattle growers, because nobody thought we could hold that road unless we paved it. And I think that's been pretty successful. We spent a lot more money on, on the granite base, had to ship it in on back hauls and so forth. But the end product, you know, I drive that fairly frequently, and the end product compared to where it was ten years ago, you can't, there's not even, there's like night and day.
And that's probably one of the things we would do if we do add that project is start discussions and considering different options.
The granite stays put even in various, and you know, it was in Colorado, but it's, it's such a long-term wear factor value, wear factor. And with the angular stone, it stays put. And, you know, it takes, you have to invest material, but I would strongly consider you look at that cost analysis compared to extending overlay because, you know, it'd have one additional value in the valley where you've got, you've got the flux with the, with your static waters. That's going to tend to be a little more forgiving, I believe, than, than overlay. But anyway.
I just ask that as
While you're on the topic, I just, let's not forget that, you know, it's, it's only a bargain if it's a long-term value.
Yep.
So don't forget granite in our mitigation.
It's, now, since we're talking about stuff, it's only money. Don't forget that granite makes one heck of a base, just like you said, regardless of the wearing surface, no matter what you do. And you get it in some of these sand areas, even if there isn't overlay. I don't have to tell you about the drainability, about the non-pumping, all of the good things it has. It's expensive, Ken already mentioned the interlocking. So I'm telling you something you already know, but.
And we do have experience with cattle growers road that
Yeah, it's, it's a proven commodity.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason.
Yep. Any more, nothing else on the one year? Guess we can jump to the six-year then?
Well, while we are on the one year, I want to make a comment. This may not be the time, but I did kind of run some quick numbers. And I apologize that I didn't get a chance to ask you earlier, but it's pretty obvious to me that the crew that works with you from this board has thought about budget, because when you look back at the numbers last year, I was going to try to see how many of those non, for example, we look at the bridge and we take some of those special road funds out, are we, are we at? Looks like we're just a nickel under last year. So thank you ahead of time, but I want to mention that on the one year.
So I guess that's something we didn't, I didn't bring up. I'm glad you brought that up, Joe. But we did add a, an item to our one year that shows a funding source just for our planning. So as you can see, that funding source column on the one year kind of shows what our plan is and how we're going to pay for these, right?
Absolutely, and I went back and looked at that one, thank you.
Yep, and that's why the subdivision, we were going to use the special road fund. And then that way it'll keep our county line item asphalt budget, I think it was one point eight-eight million is what the three projects come to, which is pretty much in line with our, our plan. And then we do have the line item for the South and East Banner Road project. And then the Birdwood Overpass, of course, was the bridge buyback funds for bridge maintenance.
Just a couple of notes that I was taking along the way. So I too appreciate that you added that funding source column to the document. It's nice to know how these are getting paid for. And we can attest, budget's always a big part of our reviews whenever, and, and we appreciate how cognitive the road department is of that. Replacing bridges with culverts. I see a couple of those in your one-year plan. You've been doing that for a while. That has been a, a good replacement. You guys have seen the benefits of using culverts and not bridges.
Oh, yeah, I think, I'll let Brian speak to it, I think he has a little more.
Yeah, we've, we've done a ton of them. I couldn't tell you how many in the years I've been here. We took out the wooden ones and a lot of them started with the, the weekend phone calls that the bridge was borrowed.
Yeah.
And we're, we just got to the point where the way to handle them was to yank them out. Some of them that are on the list are simply there, like Wells has been on there for a long time. It's just there because it's a wooden bridge. It's in pretty good shape. And when we start to see, you know, deterioration, they'll get yanked out too and replace the culverts.
Cost comparison, there's probably a noticeable savings in putting in tubes as opposed to building a new bridge.
It's huge, it's way cheaper, and there's no maintenance. Put the tubes in and you're done.
Very good. The other thing I'd like to point out is on your one-year plan, there are actually four projects that were on our six-year plan that got done last year. So just because something's on the six-year plan doesn't mean that, you know, if it works into the budget and there's a need and you guys have time, you go out and address those and take care of them. So thank you very much.
Yep.
That's all I had.
Yeah, the foremen are really good about picking those off the six-year too, if they happen to have good moisture or something, they, they just go ahead and knock something out that maybe wasn't in the plan.
Well, if that's a culvert on Boxell or, or the bridge I'm thinking about, just south of the valley, you know, that's a no-brainer to tear that out, because once you put that, shoot the elevations, which you guys always do, and engineer the right-sized culvert and then backfill it, you're not going to have to touch that press, you say, Brian, for a long, long time.
Yep.
And, yeah, you don't have to engineer that, it's pre-engineered, you know, there's fluid you can put on that too, but how much water runs through it, on a fifty-year flood and all the good stuff. Long before any of us got here, when Joe was here, by himself and a couple other guys, you guys were, I know, very cognizant of evolving into culvert replacements on some of these smaller bridges. And they saw the value. And of course, it hasn't changed any, still a great value. Right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
I just said you were buying lunch.
Yes, sir.
Did you catch that part?
Haven't had it turned up, I heard the whole thing for a change.
So on to the six-year. So I guess just something to note, we actually, this year, we've completed a lot of projects. I think we dove in even deeper to our planning than what we have in the past. We're going to continue to hopefully keep every year diving in a little bit deeper and a little bit deeper. So we did add quite a few projects. So all the, all the project numbers that start with a twenty-five are the ones we added this year. So some of those actually are on the, the one-year plan, but then on the six-year, I think there was a total of twenty-three projects we added to either the one or the six-year plan this year. So, so quite a few projects we did add. A lot of them being the bigger asphalt overlay projects and just so we could try to plan those out a little further than, than what we have in the past, so.
Question for you with what you just said, the four-digit road number or project number, the first two were the year that they're added?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm going to come back to that here in a second.
Yep. Well, it's leading off, I think, is your question. So there's the first one right there. On the six-year, we have Eugene Avenue on there, which has been on there for quite a few years, as it was added in two thousand sixteen. So we did get some movement on this this year. We started getting some preliminary estimates on different ideas or planning for how to build that project. So I think the major consensus is with the, our portion as well as tying into the city's portion there, it probably needs to be more of a residential-type road, with it being like a concrete with curb and gutter and storm sewer associated with the drainage, that sort of thing. So right now, the preliminary numbers I have, I put in a two-million-dollar estimate for that portion of road there, because there's going to be right-of-way acquisitions in there. And not only that, but just the storm sewer and the drainage is going to be a pretty major undertaking. But, so that's kind of our estimate currently. And I guess that being said too, I know that road's in pretty rough conditions. So we do have plans this year out of our repair budget to do some work out there to repair a couple spots, to get it, get it, I guess, more acceptable until we can get a project there. Another thing we're doing, we did have discussions again with, with the city about possibly co-op and to apply for a grant for that whole portion of road there. So maybe if we can look at some of the funding mechanisms that are out there right now, maybe we can try to get some of that cost covered, even if it's just a portion of it or depending on what, what's available.
Jason?
Mm-hmm.
Is it required or necessary for us to do that at the same time the city would do their portion? Or would we be okay to go ahead and do our portion before they did theirs?
Well, I guess it would depend on, if we just wanted to do our own project, then we could do our own project independent if we wanted. But if we do
Apply for a grant.
Apply for a grant and proceed with them, then it would probably be done all in one, one project. We'd probably combine that project to one project, just to try to get a better price, actually, if you combine it all.
And, and more consistency across the entire range?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, just real quick, I'm glad that you mentioned repairs, because I drove that stretch of road several times in the last month. And I know with the heat and the cold and, but it has deteriorated considerably. So thank you for recognizing that and at least patching repairs to make it safer for the people that use it frequently.
Yep.
Go ahead, Kent.
Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but a big snafu on that Eugene has always been that, that the right-of-way is not, a dedicated right-of-way is not consistent throughout that area for number one, right?
Yep.
We've got, some you've got ten feet and some you don't have anything, right? So to me, and the city's got the same challenges on their portion. So to me, it makes total, I mean, I don't know how you not work an interlocal or a joint agreement to tackle that. I don't see how you do it right, because if you go in there and piecemeal it, well, it's just, it looks to me like a comprehensive project, makes total sense. And maybe that's where the emphasis should be. I don't know about the grant thing, I don't know if we need to enter a, into an interlocal or something like that to, to start a serious conversation or what?
Yeah, and that's, I've, I've had some preliminary conversations with the city about it, but it's probably something we need to, I guess I'll see, their one and six-year hearing is this week as well. So I'll probably get back to them after that and then we can discuss maybe getting more, I guess, more of a formal agreement on pursuing something.
I guess, like I said, the common theme I've heard in the last seven years, six years is acquisition of right-of-way is the number one challenge, because you've got so much variance as far as what we already have, what we in the city already have for dedicated right-of-way, and some that are, is woefully too narrow. And let's, I'll use the word disruptive, because it would be fairly disruptive to a lot of those property owners to go in there and do it right.
Yeah, and I think even some of, not in ours, in the county's portion of it, I don't think we have any issues with the expanded right-of-way and the structures, but I know the city does have some challenges, I think, to even the structures that sit along there in getting the right-of-way, so.
Has there been any conversation with the city thus far on this stretch?
Yeah, I've, I've had conversations with them already, but nothing really formal or
A concern that I have is when we make these improvements, we widen this road adequately, it becomes a superhighway for truck traffic right through the residential.
And that is a concern I've heard from some residents in the area too, that, that would be a concern of theirs, but
There may be some, some opportunities. I know that there's, there's an, at least in a conversation I had with one of the city officials, a desire that they have to connect Walker and Eugene in some fashion somewhere along that route. And I, I know that in that brief brainstorming, talk around about some kind of traffic control was discussed, that may be an option for a grant opportunity, because I know that the state really likes that, so.
Well, I think with the grants too, I, we've been told numerous times that if there's people partnering together, a lot of times you get a little more preference in the projects too. So, yeah, so I think that's something good. I think we'll start kicking off a little more formal talks with them on, on that, so. Next one on the list is Wells. So that one's a culvert project, wooden bridge culvert replacement, like we talked about. Ridge Road, same thing, it's a bridge replacement with a culvert. Hanson Hill, replacing a bridge with a culvert. Hershey Dickens Road, so that's one that has been on there a couple of years now, and that one is, I guess as everyone knows, is a pretty highly-traveled thoroughfare there. And we are going to pursue, seeing if there's any funding available for that project as well.
Because even if we divide that in half, that's about all of our year's budget, just on
Yeah, and that's, that's why it would really be nice if we can find some type of funding for that, even if it's a, some type of a match funding, or even if it's a fifty-fifty match, or it would still help us out. Because if we, if we decide we want to take that project on alone, then it's, it's just going to delay our entire asphalt program by the two years it's going to take to get down that. So if we can somehow come up with some funding to help us out with that one, that would sure help out our entire program.
But with, as you mentioned, the level of traffic, especially truck traffic on that road, as narrow as it is, that's, 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 that's a high priority.
Yeah, and depending on what we do with the funding there as well, we might, we haven't broke out a separate project for it, because we, I guess we're leaving it all lumped in the one project for right now. But is the, looking at doing a possible straightening on the curves on correction line there too, to improve the safety there and not have that, those tight curves right there as well. Next project is South Dickens Road, so that's a road rebuild project going from, pretty much from Dickens down six miles at the south end of the county there. Twenty-three-sixteen is West State Farm, so that's a, a road rebuild, two miles between Hershey Dickens and South Range Road to the east there. Sarban Road, so this one is the mill and overlay of the four-point-eight miles, starting at Highway thirty and going all the way to the west county line. North Hershey Road, so this is where we more or less start into the projects we've added this year to our six-year. So the North Hershey Road is this year to our six-year. So, the North Hershey Road is the widened mill and overlay of the four miles from North River down to Hershey. So, it would more or less complete that entire corridor there that we've been working on last year and, and this year as 2502, so that one is Old Highway 83. Looks like I have that wrong in the description for some reason. But anyway, the 2502 is the mill and overlay of Old Highway 83, beginning at State Farm and going south to the, into the asphalt there.
On that particular project, a couple of things. The folks that haul dirt out of there for sustainable beef, was there some agreement that we had with them as far as them helping us with that particular stretch of asphalt?
We, we do have the agreement, our permit is with the landowner. And we had a, kind of a gentleman's agreement with the folks that were doing sustainable beef. Those guys were wonderful to work for, or work with, I guess, work with. Those, those folks did everything they said they would do to help us out with that roadway and do everything. We actually had a meeting with them, how long ago was that?
Hmm.
Fall?
Yeah, fall.
Um, because they said, "We are completely done. We want to meet and go through everything of what we need to do." And they, they did that. And that was one of the reasons why they wanted to do it, I guess. They wanted to make sure we were aware that their operations were done. So, don't, don't call them anymore, right? So-
So, they're not hauling or mining off of that property anymore?
Oh, yeah. It's still active.
Van Kirk's are not.
Yeah, Van Kirk is-
Sustainable beef is not.
The plant is not. They're doing it for other customers.
Yes, but they are still active in that, that mining out there of that property. And it's going to multiple locations. I think some of the new sustainable beef work that was not contracted with Van Kirk was done out of there. And I think they've been hauling to other multiple locations too, including 83, Highway 83 South. So-
Jason, 2502 says a, it's a bridge replacement?
Yeah.
But it shows about, it shows about a mile or a half mile of road on the red. You know, usually a bridge replacement is just a little dot. So, 2502, if you look at it on the map-
Well, O2 on the map, like I said in the description, I don't know how, that's the wrong description for Ridge Road. It should be, if-
My bad. I wasn't listening.
Right behind you there is the O2. It shows the location right there in the center almost.
This one?
Yep.
Yeah, but that shows a long line.
Yeah. So, it is the Old Highway 83.
Right, but, but usually you'll just have, when you are bridge replacements, you just have a little dot.
It's not a bridge replacement.
It's an O.
Oh, it's a description.
Read wrong on the description. The description's wrong. Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Makes sense now.
Okay.
I was going to ask where that was at, that you're talking about. No, I mean, I was going to say, where do you need a head wall and a bridge?
On, on the first farm, it's correct, but on the detail, it's incorrect.
Gotcha. All right. Jason, the second part of that question that I have is, is thinking ahead to what the state in Nebraska has planned for expanding Newberry. One could almost imagine that they're going to need some extra dirt to build up that road.
Mm-hmm.
And that mining project that you have referred to, that has been utilized by quite a few other folks, I see it every day. So, there's a lot of dirt going out of there yet, even though sustainable beef is done. Do we know if the state of Nebraska is going to need, or is there dirt enough there for fill for a possible expansion of Newberry?
I'm not aware of what their plans are for that project as far as their need for fill and where they're sourcing that from. So, I guess I couldn't, I couldn't answer that.
If, if they are, would it be advisable for us as a county to delay this Old Highway 83 as long as we can in case they do have a lot of truck traffic on that section of the road?
Well, that, uh, yeah, I mean, right now, it's on the six-year. So, we don't have any plans currently for that. And I guess that would depend on maybe when they complete that. I don't know how long that, that permit is for.
Was it for five years?
Was it five or 10? I thought it was a 10-year.
Yeah.
I know in construction, it's not going to start on Newberry until, I think the
last conversation I had was end of '28, early '29 possibly.
Yeah, they're just doing the Scopa service work.
Yeah. So, get them options.
Let's see, next project is the Banner Road, the South Channel Bridge. So, we did add that one on there. That bridge is, keeps deteriorating. Our latest inspection, actually, we had to downgrade a few items on it. So, we are, actually already have, working with the, with Deena Harris with the state about getting funding for, for that one. So, she's looking into that for us right now. So, hopefully-
She is a tremendous resource.
Yep. Hopefully, we can get that one on one of the next rounds of the, the bridge funding. And we can go ahead and get going on that one. 2504 is West Walker Road. So, that's rebuilding that gravel road between Highway 25 and South Seifer Road. So, mile and a half there, out west of Sutherland Reservoir.
From Highway 25 to the west, that we're so excited to hear.
05-
I'm not seeing it on here. Oh, there it is, way up here.
Is West Antelope Road. So, that's the same thing, rebuilding of a mile and a half of road from Wild Rose to Game Trail. 2506 is North Game Trail. So, that's replacing an existing bridge along an irrigation canal there.
There you go.
So, that one is, we have a couple of them on there that are actually crossing irrigation canals. So, we have them on the six-year. So, hopefully, we can start some discussions with the irrigation folks. Plan on meeting with them to start discussions with them as far as how we can replace those and their needs and if they're willing to co-op with us on the cost, if they're going to change the needs based on what they, what they need there for structures.
That's the Birdwood South, isn't it, irrigation district?
Uh, no, I think these are-
Flat Valley.
Flat Valley.
Flat Valley?
Yeah. Yep. Then South Range Road. So, that's a, a mile, actually finishing the last mile on that link between State Farm and Power. So, extending that down. Then we have some mill and overlay projects. So, starting with Wild Horse, 2205. So, that's the 2.1 miles of Wild Horse. The next one is the rest of the North Brady Road project, which is nine and a half miles up to the end of the asphalt there from Wild Horse. The next one is East County Line. That's about 1.4 miles of, of ours that goes from Highway 30 up 1.4 miles on the east county line. Until we meet up with Dawson County's maintenance there. Then Spadall, there's a mile and a half there that we have on the list as well. So, trying to lump some of these together in areas so we can create projects and then look ahead for the next years, I guess, if you can kind of follow up that train of thought there.
Yep.
Uh, North Parkway Road. So, this is replacing, that's the other one, replacing an existing bridge on a canal, very small canal. But it's, that bridge is pretty narrow and it's offset pretty severely. So, it's one we'd like to get replaced. 13 North Willow Creek Road. So, I guess that's another one off on the, on an irrigation canal as well. So, there's three of them. Then on to some more overlays. So, Jandabar Second Subdivision, we have on, we added on here for an overlay. Lakeview Subdivision, we added for an overlay. East Brown Road. So, that would do the entirety of East Brown Road. That would be a mill and overlay. And then 2518 is the South and East Banner Road. So, that's the onyx or armor coating of the, the last seven miles all the way to the county line. North Smith Road. So, this is two miles between Garfield Table and all the way up to the north county line of a rebuild there for that gravel road. Then North Brady Road. So, that's the rebuild of the gravel road from the end of the asphalt all the way up to Needon Road, totaling nine miles there. And then the last one we added to our list was the West Lone Star Road. So, this is the, we thought it was good to add to the six-year plan, given the discussions we've had so far on that. And if we were to do anything with it, we need to have it on the six-year plan. So, right now, this consists of the design, engineering, earthwork, drainage, stabilization, rojan control, gravel and signage of eight miles of new construction. So, if you look on the map, it shows our, our location based on, I guess, our very first original discussion of just extending Lone Star Road, eight miles from, we have one mile of county road there coming off of Somerset now. And this would be just extending it straight-
Straight through.
Straight through, all the way to Hershey Dickens. So-
Potentially.
Potentially, yes. And right now, I do have an estimate on there of 2 million. So, after getting some rough numbers from, from our engineer, then that's kind of what we come up with for the, the rough cost of right now rebuild or building new road through there.
2 million, you said.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Jason, I'm going to start with a question about Hershey Dickens Road. I drive it fairly frequently. And right, and it's on our six-year plan. We've had lots of conversations about it in our meetings. I, I know what the plan is for the big repairs and, and our hopes, what we can do with Hershey Dickens. Because as, as we continue to develop in that part of the county, it's just going to receive more and more heavy local agriculture traffic and additional traffic. But in the meantime, there are plans to like maybe do some shouldering and, and repairs. I've seen a big deterioration right in front of and leading up to the feedlot there, which stands to reason. And do we have anything in the plans for that?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So, actually, we don't have anything currently in the plan for right in front of the feedlot right now. That road is deteriorating a little bit because of all the turning truck traffic there.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll definitely address that if we need to. We do have it in our plan. There's a couple of spots. I don't know them specifically. One of them is between Walker and State Farm. I think there's a, a good blowout spot in it that we're planning on getting repaired. And then there's another one further to the south there that we have in the plans to get repaired this year. And yeah, we probably will, we don't have any major shouldering operations scheduled, but it seems like every year, we're always doing a little-
A little bit.
Bit there to, yeah.
As needed, if it washes or drops off.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had. Is that the end of your presentation? It looks like it is.
That is the end. So, unless anybody has any questions or-
Does anybody have any further questions for our roads team while they are sitting at the table?
Not right now, but we're sure, right, all you have to-
I think I have that note from last year.
Okay. With that, I will open the floor to the general public. We can keep commentary. I don't see a large group of people in the audience. Three to five minutes, based on anything that anybody would like to read into our record or communicate with us. Mr. Cook, if you'd like to come up and sign in and announce yourself?
Chair settling. My name is Michael Cook. I live at 1906 West Eugene Avenue, North Platte. Want to thank the commissioners, Adam Sherman and the other commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. Obviously, as you all know, I'll be talking about Eugene Avenue. And this, the reason I'm here today is to celebrate the 10th anniversary of Eugene Avenue being put on the one and six-year plan. It's been 10 years since I first came to you folks and asked you to consider the issues with Eugene. The, the reason at that time was that Eugene Avenue had been tied into Buffalo, you know, Bill's Road and became an ancillary or auxiliary cutoff road, if you will, between Buffalo and the highway. And subsequent to that, the road started having issues as far as deterioration and needed to be looked at. At that time, probably could have been, although it would have been, would not have been wider, it could have been saved as far as the, the actual road itself. There were suggestions made over the next couple of years after that, that just as South River Road was armor alt, you could do the same thing to this road and protect the existing pavement on it and possibly reduce some of the wear that the road was experiencing. It was also suggested that truck traffic be reduced on the road, in fact eliminated heavy truck traffic. And that, again, lengthened out the time period for this road to be, you know, drivable. The only problem with that is that, well, frankly, an accommodation was made for a individual who had a, trucks parked on the west end. And the idea was that he would be allowed to bring the trucks in off of Buffalo and back out onto Buffalo. That has been, that has gone nowhere. The trucks run basically every day, at least once, if not twice a day, down Eugene Avenue. And there, it's not the only one. There's other trucks, traffic, heavy truck traffic that comes down through there all the time. There's feed trucks, there's trucks that are carrying heavy equipment, there's construction trucks, there's delivery trucks, I understand, you know, UPS and FedEx and that. But they're not the, they're not the primary cause of the problem. It's the heavy trucks that are tearing, starting to really tear the road up. It's come to the point now where actually some of those trucks are forcing vehicles into the ditch. It's not uncommon to see a, a vehicle parked in the ditch because it's been run off the road. This happened to me last winter. It also happened to the fire department two years ago. I noticed the county, one of the blades- years ago, uh, I noticed, uh, the county, uh, one of the blades, uh, went off the road, uh, I think that was two years ago, so it's, the, the width of the road is, is a significant problem, as well as the heavy traffic, and the fact that, uh, as vehicles are wider now than they were when that road was originally, uh, built, and they just, you know, if people don't slow down and move over, they have a real problem, uh, with, uh, uh, traffic on that road. Uh, at this point, you know, I, I mentioned, uh, probably about five years ago, that if something wasn't done, that we'd start seeing delamination of the road. At that time, the county road superintendent, uh, she, uh, went out there and they seal-coated several of the cracks in the road where it was starting to come apart, they posted the signs, uh, I, I don't know if it, I think it was before that, of no truck traffic, which is kind of interesting, because, uh, the west sign, if you notice, is leaning over. The reason it's leaning over is, uh, some truck making the turn pushed the sign down one day about a year and a half ago, and I went back in there and pulled the sign up as far as I could, uh, figuring that, uh, eventually, it would be fixed, you know, stabilized back where it belonged, but it's still leaning over. The, uh, delamination is becoming a significant issue. Uh, I listened to the presentation about having a few spots that were delaminating, there are actually five spots right now that are, the, uh, pavement is completely gone, and the, I'm talking about not just cracks or small holes, I'm talking about significant areas of three to four foot, uh, in size that are, that is just gone, and, and that's becoming a real problem. Uh, I remember, uh, Commissioner Brun's, uh, comments last year, uh, that, uh, you know, it was time to look at, uh, this road and, and figure out what we were gonna do with it, because it's just gonna cost us, and we know it's gonna get more expensive as we go, and it is, there's no doubt about it. Uh, I, I listened to, uh, the comments about the fact that the sewer line and the waterline and the right-of-way width are gonna be significant issues. Two of those, the waterline, you know, that's a significant cost, but not a great cost to, that, when you consider the other costs. The sewer lines, i- i- it's not gonna happen, because you can't run sewer east on Eugene, it's running uphill. And to, as the previous city engineer told me, he said, to get a sewer line to run from where it ends over off of, uh, the city line, uh, at the city limits to my house, the sewer line would be six feet in the air, to get it on standard grade. So what happened was that, for example, when the property that I owned was rezoned prior to my purchase of it, uh, two easements were taken, one on each side, to run the sewer lines south towards the, uh, main sewer sewage line that was put in along the, the Fremont Loop, and the city is looking at, or has pu- looked at, putting in a line on Walker Road. Now, Walker Road up to, uh, Ioke can run a sewer line and then go south, so the intent was run the sewer lines that way. So the sewer lines are not an issue when it comes to redoing, uh, Eugene Avenue. Now, as far as right-of-way, there, at the time that this started being an issue, there were seven properties on the south side. The city, or, I'm sorry, the, the planning took, when, when the property was rezoned that I live at, took ten feet, and they took ten feet off of some of the others. So of the seven properties, four of them have already got that s- ten feet, and mine is the oldest one as far as the sale. All those properties along there have sold during the period of time that I've lived out on Eugene. What I'm saying is that the county failed to take the ten feet off those other properties during the sale, like they did when the property that I subsequently purchased was originally rezoned, and the ten feet could be acquired.
Mr. Cook, thank you. You've put a lot of time and effort and a lot of commentary and, um, over the years, we are now at eight minutes. Are you ready to wrap up?
Yes, and I mentioned one last thing, and I'll, and I'll stop. Okay, uh, it seems interesting to me that, um, there are three subdivisions planned for paving during the, the one-year plan. There was the Maxwell Road Extend, uh, paving project, uh, the paving of those three roads is six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. This goes back to the fact that I thought, at one time, I heard during a, a meeting, that the county would not support paving in those subdivisions. I don't know, maybe I just, you know, I'm, I'm getting old, so maybe I just missed it. Uh, the one-point-seven million for the work done on Maxwell Road, I thought was supposed to be limited to not much more than two-hundred thousand dollars of, of county money. I don't understand where the one-point-seven million came from.
Different segment. Different segment.
Different part of the road.
Well, this says that it's the one-point-five miles, and which is one-point-five miles from Maxwell County li- uh, town limits out to the golf course.
No, this is beyond the golf course.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I stand corrected on that then. Okay, well, anyway, uh, you know, just allocate gravel for, uh, Eugene in about five years, because there won't be any pavement left, okay? And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
May, may, may I add a comment?
Yes, you may.
Just for clarification, so for Mr. Cook's sake, you are not incorrect that in the past, the board did not support adopting more subdivisions, but we've gotten what I consider more thorough and accurate legal advice, it tells us by the way, you don't have the, you can't be arbitrary and capricious with that under the state guidelines, we have a si- they have a system we have to follow, which may, in essence, our ability to say, no, we don't want those off the table. So that's the answer to that, so, just so you know.
All right.
That's changed, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Very good. Do we have anybody else that would like to come up, Mrs. Dyke? No? Very good. Okay, we are at the point where, um, we are ready for a motion.
Can I make one more comment?
To, oh, sure, go ahead.
So, I guess, just, Mr. Cook's comment about the, all the, I think he was talking about sanitary sewer in that area, so what I was talking about in our- with storm sewer-
Storm sewer, okay.
Relating to the drainage in that area, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that, that, uh-
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to, I'd like to make one. I wanna thank, uh, Jason and Brian, they, the entire-
Entire.
Absolutely, but the photos that you included in your presentation that showed the work that was done, those are priceless, I appreciate the extra effort that you gentlemen and all of your, your, uh, workers did, that, that was really well done, thank you.
Well, thank you, yeah, we have a pretty, pretty good team out there.
Yes, you do.
I would just like to expand on that by saying, I hope the current photo up there is not a prediction of things to come.
That was last March.
You beat me to it, that was last March.
I think I recognize that photo. I think so. I, I recognize the second photo.
All right, I wanted to interject that, because we've got an excellent road department, and I want to have that.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That, that was worth.
Okay.
And I, I echo, uh, Commissioner Woodrow's comment, there's a lot of work that goes into triaging over sixteen-hundred miles of road, um, and how you work those projects into a very defined and scrutinized budget, and for the work that you've done on this plan, previous plans, and, and what you're gonna do this year, I thank you, so.
Yep, a plan is only as good as the preparation that goes into it, and that, this has been a lot, so, with that said, a motion to close our public hearing, please?
To close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Hugley.
Higginson.
Uller.
Very good, that was our final agenda item. Oh, is there one more?
Consider adopting.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, I didn't even have that marked off. All righty then. I'd like to see you guys get a grater in there. All right, we will move on to consider adoption of the plan following the public hearing.
It would be my motion that, uh, we approve the, we adopt the plan that was presented to us, the one and six-year road improvement plan for Lincoln County was presented to us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further conversation? Roll call, please?
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Ullers.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna jump down to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or representatives, I see nobody in the room.
Almost Jason.
Anything around the table, I think he's talked out. There's always next to it, Jason. Does anybody have any county commissioner committee reports?
I did a handout for, for Agency on Aging, uh, just because Erin, uh, Hornsdorf does a very good job of putting things into charts, and she handed this out at the last, uh, regular meeting, I believe, uh, showing the, uh, the cost per county within the district, within the agencies, uh, what is it, twelve, twelve county district, whatever it is, I can't remember, to be honest with you. At any rate, uh, the left column shows the cash input from each county, and then over on the, the second, the right column shows you the, uh, economic value to our citizens, and then the payback, uh, ratio for the dollars that, for example, Lincoln County spent. Twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars contributing to the Agency on Aging, and, uh, I'm not getting writer's cramp for no reason, because all the checks that I sign twice a month, uh, generate somewhere around eight-hundred thousand dollars with the value to our, our citizens, and it's a hundred dollars here and a hundred-and-fifty dollars there for in-home care, supplementation of those kind of things, you keep them out of rest homes, and, and then, uh, they do evaluations for, uh, our seniors, and it's a requirement under the guidelines to see if they qualify for assistance to go to assisted living and don't have the funds and so forth, there's a lot to it, but, as you can see, the payout ratios, it's one of those, they, you look at their two-million-dollar budget and you say, jeez, we're, it's a lot of bo- it's a lot of bottom line for the county, but it, uh, it's, that's not what the number is, it's, it's twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars to help fund a two-million-dollar operation, so, just so you're aware of the value.
Thank you for providing this, I echo what you say about Erin, she has such a heart for the work that she does, all of her employees and the board members that serve with her, I really like seeing this, um, it does, that can be kind of deceiving when you look at the budget, 'cause all we see is what we're pouring into it, but not what the work is pouring into our community, so, very, very good information, thank you for sharing that.
Madam Chair, next week, I brought this, um, I didn't make copies, but there's some good information too, just, just can't, you know, in region two, and just, uh, I'll try to get some copies, just show the same kind of bag for the buck, but it is a good, good thing, that's all.
Very good, thank you.
I have a feeling next week's committee reports are gonna be a lot.
They are gonna be a lot, 'cause we're gonna have a lot-
I would've forgot.
A lot to report back. If committee reports are over, uh, Mr. Volkmar, do we have a need for a closed session?
Uh, no need for a closed session, but I will tell the board, I found out to, after press time for the agenda last week, um, if we want a title insurance policy on Greenbrier, it's gonna be about seven grand. They cannot under-insure it for the one dollar that we're purchasing it for, so it has to be for assessed value. Legally speaking, we don't have to have one, um, liability speaking, I'm not terribly worried about it, just 'cause of the nature of the property, the prior owner, the owner before that, uh, I don't think there's any title issues, and it's been searched once already in the last three years, but, uh, if that's something the board feels very passionately about, please let me know individually, uh, and we'll work that out.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Uh, I have, claim number eighty-six would be, that'd be the last one, you think?
Yes, sir.
I hope so.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay, thanks.
Very good, if there's nothing else for the good of-